You know. Sports.
On third hour north.
Sign all over.
Best time for you to do it. But it's not.
I got a bunch of dirt.
It will in all the five.
Yeah.
And all a bunch of dirt.
Hey, Robin, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I saw Pete, did he get a call?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, Steve is not coming, so at least you're right.
Yeah, the fire department are calling out of this one, so who knows how long it's gonna be?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, probably an NBA, man. Is what we may ask.
We'll get started.
Yeah, we're ready, sir. Wait, are we ready?
Okay, we're ready. That's it, sorry, so we'll call this meeting for. Tuesday, January the twenty 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 six for the city of New Fairview, uh, city council meeting to order. Uh, we'll go straight to our one session.
Okay.
Uh, well, go.
Ricky Jones.
Yeah, two minutes, we'll leave, have a point.
Yay. Receive and. A report and help discuss regarding the business to our side. Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna ask our senior planner, uh, Stephen Cook to. Uh, pick up the conversation where we left off at the last meeting, if you recall. Explain to you why we need to, uh, make updates to our sign holding. Uh, now we're gonna talk about some specifics, we had asked you all to go out and take pictures of. Signs if you like, signs you don't like, I don't know if anybody did that, but. I asked our co-직원 officer, I said, come up, go out there and take pictures of signs that we actually have in our community. So we can review that as well, and we can see, and you can help give Stephen and I some feedback. Because he's gonna need your feedback. To be very clear, he needs your feedback because that's what he's gonna take. To put in the meat on bones, uh, the sign ordinance that he will be bringing back. For you guys to consider and adopt, okay? So now's the time to speak up, so then we can. Get it right on how you want us to regulate signage in the community. So that we'll bring you back an ordinance that does that for you, okay? And then obviously, we're gonna be working with the city attorney as well. I, I think, uh, uh, we may end up having to repeal. Language that's already existing in our, in our ordinance, because what you wanna do, you wanna make sure you don't have any. Conflicting language, so typically you can do the cleanup at the same time if you're adopting a new language. But we'll work with the city attorney to get all that taken care of, so. I'm guessing, Stephen, that maybe we'll be looking at April, March?
Um, I think we could probably have something together by March.
By March, okay, so we may have a draft ordinance for them, or an ordinance we're gonna consider by March.
I, I believe so.
Okay, and, uh, Robin, does that timeline work for you? You think you can help us get an ordinance back to council by March?
Yes, I can do that.
Excellent, okay, so council, it looks like, uh, we may be, uh, fast tracking this and bringing it back something in March. Uh, based again on the input that we get from you, uh, again, Stephen. Questions or not, I'm turning over to the expert. All right, Stephen, it's all yours.
All right, first, we're gonna just kind of look at some of the signs that, um, that. Your staff has put together and in, that are currently in in Fairview today. Uh, this is really kind of a subdivision pylon sign, not pylon sign, it's a monument sign. And so when we talk about monument signs, this is the kind of sign we're gonna talk about. Uh, it can be something that is, uh, more vertical, or it can be a little bit more horizontal, we'll show you some more pictures of that. Um, this is, uh, obviously, it's a pole or a pylon sign is what the nomenclature we're gonna be using in the ordinance. Um, this is a long, uh, two eighty seven, uh, this is probably a sixty foot pole. So, you know, the thing is, is that. That is, you know, they wanna see have visibility from considerable distance off, especially if there's going to be. Issues with topography as you get closer to Rome, you got that hill that, that you're kind of coming over and. And that, uh, this is the first thing they wanna see on the horizon, so they know that they can make that exit to, uh, to get there. Uh, and so tho- those are things that we can consider when we look at, uh, various heights. One of the things that we had the feedback from last meeting was. Maybe we do pole pylon signs along two eighty seven, and we do something shorter along four oh seven. Uh, I've got some options, and we can kind of look at what those, what those options might be. Uh, this is also a pole or pylon sign, it's a little bit taller than what a monument sign would be, this doesn't have, have a more of a. Uh, uh, improved base, it is not, uh, you know, kind of flush with the ground, but, uh, this, uh. And it's a little bit taller than what we would typically wanna see as a, as a monument sign. These are, um, ban- abandoned signs in my regard, this is a, uh, a banner sign. Uh, the thing is, is that if we allow these things to happen, then they're really hard to control, we can't. Really permit them very often, and then they, uh, they get dilapidated, they are, you know, make noise, they're just. You know, they're just, uh, and you can only read it from one direction. So the thing is, is that, uh, this is something that's cheap and easy, you can go and buy this at, uh. Uh, that, like, what used to be called Tigos, but, uh, you can buy, buy this at almost any, any, you can buy that office depot. And, and, uh, they'll print them up for you. I, I, we just. In practice, they just don't work for a long period of time, they really, you know, people don't. Use them correctly, and they put them out in the right way where you can see around. So. We do have some provisions for temporary signs, um, and, uh, one of the things that we wanna do is kind of call these things more of kind of a. Uh, uh, a yard sign, because, you know, you're gonna be able to provide. Yard signs for, uh, garage sales, for the state sale, for, uh, uh, you know, various things. You know, one of the things a lot of times is that, you know, somebody might announce to their, their child, they might wanna have. You know, use this as, you know, directions to their party or something to that effect, because. We do have, you know, fairly significant amount of area, so how do we allow these kinds of signs without. Uh, having to go through a full permitting process, but we, you know. The first of all is, this is probably, uh, again, I don't see the relationship, this is in, in public right of way. Uh, we're gonna have yard signs, and again, we can't call it what it is, like a garage sale sign, because that means we're reading that sign. To say what it is, so we're calling him kind of a, uh, a yard sign, and, uh, so. Those kinds of things, we need to make sure that, um, we have. Good interpretation of where they can be located and how they're gonna be placed, we've got some.
If you don't submit it on that note. But we can still regulate to ensure that they're not in the right way?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we allow yard signs, as we'll call them for now, but. We can also still say that whether it's that temporary banner, or the little guy with the arms, or.
We can prohibit those outright.
None of that should be in public right.
Correct.
Okay, so, and where's the way we can write the sign, one has to. Put that prohibition in place.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, again, this is billboard, uh, you guys from there, was that coming, did you say we have? We have seven, uh, two eighty seven and one four oh seven.
Total of eight?
Yes, total of eight.
Billboards in our state limits, right?
So, you know, we will, we can allow these to continue to, to occur, but we, you know, probably want to. Say that any new ones might be prohibited. Which we can certainly do.
We, so we can prohibit it, no more billboards. But these we can not remove, however, when they start to become dilapidated, we can address that. At to some point where now they have to remove them because they are a hazard?
We, we can do that, there is provisions in, uh, the draft ordinance I'm working on for, uh, dilapidated signs or unimproved signs that, you know, have not been. Uh, maintained, more than likely, these kinds of signs, because they are such a, uh, huge investment. And as they do, you know, unlike something like this, which was probably. Probably built, uh, in the late sixteen seventies eighties kind of thing like this, this was, you know, this is not. This type of sign, which is a lot more, uh, substantial, that kind of investment. Will keep continue to be maintained. The only way that I've ever been, and Robin might need to check me on this, is that you have to go through the same kind of process, uh. Is, uh, you make it a non-conforming sign, and so then, uh, what you do is the, that you could potentially put a, uh. That starts with an A, and I'm gonna forget the term, I'm sorry, just like if you had a non-conforming use. Uh, that you would say, okay, well, that non-conforming use can last for twenty years. But they have to have the ability to get their investment out of that property. Before you can shut it down for non-conforming uses. So there is, there is, that's the kind of thing that, you know, that if the city is. Truly interested in removing existing billboards, there is a process to do so, it is. Long term, and it's going to be, you know, fairly enormous.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can certainly, through a adoption of a new ordinance. Prohibit the further proliferation of billboard signs.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, there is language in the draft that I'm working on about, uh, damaged signs, that you have to. Uh, a certain time period to replace, uh, the sign, and if the sign is, uh, just like a, a, a. Non-conforming structure, if the, if the sign, uh, is damaged more than fifty percent. Of its value, then they have to come into compliance with the ordinance, if it is not, if it's just usually. You know, the paneling is broken out, they, you know, you would usually allow them to, to replace the, uh. Uh, the paneling in the sign, as they're treated very similar to a non-conforming structure.
Right, so I wanna make sure again, council, that we have language in our sign ordinance that will allow us to now approach this. Business and say. You need to fix this, and we'll take it down, and it looks like. The way that's designed, it might be backing it from inside, and so I don't even know if the electricity is working. Obviously, they don't even appear to be involved in there. And then, of course, you need to replace the face on both sides, so.
There, there was a retail business, and now it's just parking lots, store, it's a letdown, or.
So, yeah, so if they don't need the sign, let me take it down.
Yes.
Right, or fix it. So that it meets our requirements, right? And, and then I guess depending on the amount of fixing that's needed, could we, I've heard you say. If it's fifty percent or more value, and they've gotta come through our permitting process?
Right, well, they, they would have to come, if they are doing anything structural to the sign, they have to go through a permitting process. But the, 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 the issue is, is that do they have to, if that sign is too tall. Or whatever we get approved in, in the disorments, and it is, becomes a non-conforming sign. And it's damaged more than fifty percent of its value. Then we can, we can make sure that they remediate the sign to the point where it comes into compliance with our ordinance, just like any structure.
Right, okay.
And again, this is a sign also that, uh, would probably. Ready for us to start.
Right, so again, this is one that you think we can address structurally.
Right. And then we, we, it needs to be reviewed.
And you're telling me this is on Joe Max's property?
Yes, sir, you go past. That little village, metal building village.
So it's in that area where he's starting to develop?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, okay, we'll get this taken care of.
It is for the change song, cut it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, he will. It will be.
Oh, man, okay.
So let's, let's talk about what kind of regulations we might wanna have here, so let me get this started. Again, just what we're doing is we're, we wanna control them and how we're going to evaluate the sign regulations. So tonight, we're gonna look at some specific sign types, and we'd love some direction. As to how we might do, and again, we're gonna be controlling signs, not by what is read, what, what we read on them, but by their timing. Their place and the manner in which they're constructed. So, when we look at pylon and pole signs, these are the kind of types of signs that we're talking about. Where you might have a pylon, where it's a single type of structure, and the sign is part of it, it might be integrated as part of the, the structure itself. Or it can be a multi-panel sign, pylon, that means that you might have, uh, uh. Turn off the spam, and what we might have is a, uh, primary sign, uh, when we look at the pilot sign there, that is a multi. Uh, uh, panel sign, because they've got the, uh, first, uh, image. There is this, is the sign for the pilot, and then they have the second image is the, is the pricing on it. Regardless of what is on that sign, that is a multi-panel sign. Uh, again, we also have a individual pole sign that might be a, a monopole, or, or, uh, in that, there's multiple facets to it. So when we calculate on just a pole pylon sign, that'd be just one individual, we just calculate the area of the sign itself. We do look at the height of that, um, what. This is, uh, some, some information from another ordinance that I've written, where we look at, uh, the maximum area and the maximum height. So again, we look at. Those tied to, rather than zoning districts, and we'll get at as, as tied to, uh, arterial waters, you have a master therapy plan. Where that shows that those kind of signs, uh, may occur. Um, we do look at the opportunity for local or collector's streets for a pole pylon sign. Mainly because that's where your schools are going to be located on, and so they're gonna wanna have a sign, they're usually. Uh, an elementary school will have a, a pole sign, and it'll also have electronic message for. You announce kids' birthdays and all sorts of kinds of things, so we need to kind of accommodate that opportunity. Um, into that, and then, but we're, we're looking at fifty square feet and only a fifteen foot height, that's, that's not a significant sign. And again, the, the illumination and the other kinds of things are still going to be a part, we're not talking illumination here for just a little. Uh, we talked about minor arterial, so it's gonna be something that's like Ran Row. Pioneer Road, this may have eventual commercial, uh, development on it, major arterial is gonna be a, uh, FM four oh seven going through the community. Uh, and then when we talk about, uh, highway or freeway, we're talking about, um, two eighty seven.
Do we happen to know how tall? The current monopole is for pioneer, for, uh, pilot?
Yeah, sixty feet. It's three twenty foot section, so sixty feet to the bottom of it.
When we measure the monopole, you measure from the, the, you touch the ground to the top of the pole, or to the bottom of the signage?
We talk, measure to the top of the sign.
The top of the sign, so the sign is all the way to the top of the pole. It's the top of the sign.
It's the top of the sign, so that way it is. It's not, it's absolutely clear how, how tall that thing is, because then. If we say it's only to the top of the pole, well, they might put the sign area that's, you know, another ten fifteen feet.
So I believe you've been involved in emails that I've been, uh, going back and forth with the, uh. Engineers that are looking at commercial development, down at TA seven, four oh seven. I don't remember what their ask was as far as the height of the monopole, we mean.
I don't remember.
Cause I, I, I. For some reason, I'm thinking it's more than fifty feet, it might be sixty feet, but.
It might be sixty feet.
Would there be a problem if we did sixty, or would the preference be. Force them to come and ask for, not a variance, but what is that term you use?
Uh, one of the ones is, we talk about a uniform, unified, uh, sign, uh, plan. Where they might, and basically, or acts like a, um, uh, specific use. Where they have to come in and ask permission from the council, these are the signs that we're looking at doing, these are our, our specifications, where they're located. All the same things that you would look at from a specific use permit, and saying, this is what our signs. Are going to be, and then you, as the council, may make a decision. And there is language in the ordinance that I'm drafting that gives you that authority to make a, uh, uh, sign. Permit just for that particular requirement.
And we're also. And we're talking about a maximum of fifty feet, we also need to be thinking about current violation. You heard our president sign in, uh, in Florida, he wanted to sign maybe a leg, so he just made a. Like a forty or fifty foot barn, and it's pretty. The method requirement, so we got a sixty foot sign on a forty foot barn.
So I've got.
Follow the rules.
I didn't have a, I didn't bring that graphic in this presentation, but I do have a graphic that shows what the relative height is, it's very similar to what we. Uh, have in ordinance today for fencing.
Right, you know. We've had gaming shit like that, I don't say thirty thirty, but him and I have experienced that in other cities, we'll work that, where they'll do that, say, oh, well, then. I can't build a ten foot fence, okay, well, I'm gonna raise the level of the ground, and then build your eight foot fence, if it's not becomes a ten foot fence, or it's twelve foot fence. And you can't do that for our fence ordinance, so you can't play that game with us here, and so we're saying we can do the same language for.
Yes, and, and, and we'll have a graphic that shows how, how, when your, your staff gets a signed permit. Then they'll have a graphic that says, this is how we measure that. And this is what you have to show us.
If you build a barn there.
No.
If you still.
Relative height of the sign.
Why is the highway monopole at fifty in the path, the highway multi forty?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, which part are we looking at?
On the pylon, here's his highway fifty foot max height. And next panel for multi signs, it says the max size is forty.
So the, or a multi-panel pylon sign is that you. The, the height for a forty is, is that, is that it would be. It, it, it's just an aesthetic choice, to be honest with you, and what we're looking at is, uh, a multi-tenant sign's gonna be much more, um. Geared towards a, uh, retail center, rather than just, uh, a, uh. Individual use, like the, the highway type of use, um. What I'm trying to get us away from is what happened to me personally in Ulyss. Where I had a guy come in with a, uh, sixty foot sign. And he said, it's a multi-tenant sign, and it ended up being three panels, each panel was like a hundred and twenty square feet. And it was huge, and you had Exxon, you had a, a Chicken Express, and then you had, uh, a, a price of something. And it became overwhelming. And it just is, it's, it's what happens when you see, uh. Something that, I forget, there's the, there's the guy out of, uh. Uh, Wausau Hatching, and he's going around building, uh, it's a nice guy, uh, builds these barbecue travel centers. Uh, and, uh. You, you know who I'm talking about?
I know.
Yeah, the barbecue travel centers, and these pylon signs, he puts every single, you know, if it's a Sonic, if there is a. Is that who it is? All right, so. So Ulyss has got one, uh, you know, there's one on the south of, uh, Alvarado. Uh, or no, it's just north of Alvarado, it's between Burleson and Alvarado. And like I said, he's a nice guy, but he is going to push your limits on signage as much as possible. So what we're trying to do is, is. If you're gonna have multi panels on it, then we're going to kind of shorten it down a little bit, because you have a little bit more leeway in the square footage of the sign.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do we require engineer plans, cause obviously with the winds out here?
Everything is gonna be engineered, you have, I've already been talking with Rain Slam, because they've been kind of giving me some ideas about what they wanna do for their. Uh, monument signage, to, to going into the building, it, or to into the subdivision. All of their monument signage is over four feet, if it is over four feet in, in height, it's a wall, and so it has to be engineered.
Do we also require spell check for the signage?
And redesign.
I ask on behalf of General Kozlowski. Because it is carrying her up, but they're not an apothecary, and settlers, and settlers went and bought our sign.
There's a space for it.
There's a space for it, but there's no.
So your team is online, and she's gonna tell me, if you are reading the sign. And you can't control.
So anyway, I told her I'm just gonna connect her with our country, and then her and that, as a private citizen. Okay, got it, so did that answer your question? Okay.
So again, when we look at a multi-panel pylon sign, we're trying to look at, uh, the total sign area that is, uh. allowable, and then we're trying to keep, you know, some of that signage from being overwhelming, what we would look at is, um, if you go to a target center, and they have. Uh, a lot of strip retail with that, then you're gonna have your primary tenant, and then you're going to have multiple smaller tenants on, onto that sign. And we want those to kind of be integrated into the sign, the trend now is to be that kind of a little bit more like that, the nineteen sixties. This has a very sixties feel, this graphic does, and it had, you're seeing that also, you're seeing the. Instead of where you have two poles that are going up, and then you just have a. Slate of, of tenants, what they do is they do kind of give them a little bit of separation between each of the tenant signs. And then they might have some architectural element that provides, um, a unified theme for the center. And then you would have your primary tenant, and then you would have your subsequent ten, smaller tenants on, on that sign like that. You, oh my gosh, uh, the city of, uh, uh, Buddha, just south of, uh, Austin, has, you know. Huge number of retail centers, each one of those signs is completely different from the others, and they all have this kind of really. Beats, uh, you know, if you're gonna have a sign, they all, they all look really good, now. Let's talk about, as we're transitioning to that, that unified sign, uh, plan. Basically is, is that you will say, all right, you're going to have, right now, we won't, only gonna limit, uh, most development. To one of these signs on their property, okay, then you might have a, a monument sign that goes along with it on, uh, street frontage. Do you have a unified sign plan? Then you might have multiple signs, so if you have a, uh, strip center, that is gonna be. You know, you have the acreage here, eventually at some point into the future, you might have a hundred acre retail center. Hopefully, you know, but with that, you're gonna have. You know, a lot of signage that they're going to want, you know, one, one, one every two hundred feet, you know, kind of thing, so. That's where you come in and say. Rather than individually permitting signs, let's do a unified plan. Say, okay, well, on that entire frontage, let's have. Two multi-tenant. Pylon signs, multi-panel, we're not talking about tenants, not reading what's on it, the multi-panel signs. And then you might have internally monument signs that are gonna be smaller, so then when you're. Driving by, I know that this is what's gonna be in the center, but then once I approach and come into the center, I have smaller signs that are a little bit more skilled. To the traffic within the internal street network, that show me exactly where I need to go to each of those. Yeah, absolutely. And those can you be utilized as directional signs to measure, okay, well, I'm, I'm coming in, and, and I'm on a baggage road behind all the. The businesses along the frontage, and that, that tenant signs says, well, that's where I turn in to go into outback. It's just, again, we want to. It's the balance that we talked about last time. So we want the balance of. We wanna control the settings, which is really the primary purpose of this, we wanna, don't wanna proliferation sign. And. We wanna make sure that the applicant has opportunity to present their, uh, advertising, so that they get. The kind of traffic that they're looking. So when we look at monument signs. We want the, uh, intent that I'm kind of looking at right now is sixty square feet for the sign, with a maximum height of sixty. We have looked at other ordinances, and other ordinances do look at, uh, a monument sign at eight feet, I'm six foot. When you put a monument sign that might be. You know. CMU as your, as your base, not, we wouldn't allow flat-faced CMU as sign base, but we're talking about, let's say. Uh, even, uh, HCMU, that's color graded in all those nine yards, at eight feet. That's a huge sign. And dominates, and it really, really is hard, especially if you have that along the frontage.
So it's based on the camera?
No, the base, that, the base is, it does, does count, base does count on the height.
I thought you were adding to the base.
No, 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 it's eight feet total, eight feet is, is really, really big. And it is, and, and so, so I'm, I'm looking at a six foot as a maximum for your, for the monument sign.
Eight feet's gonna hide your business behind it, pretty much.
But I would challenge you to drive up Main Street in Ulyss and look at. Every single one of the monument signs, because they did this, uh, actually, I guess it was twenty years ago. They said, all right, no more pole signs on Main Street, so you all have to do monument signs. Well, they, they set it at eight feet, and they did it at, in CMU brick, and they are monstrosities, they're just huge. Eight feet's a lot.
What about the example of the Paloma? That's a monument, right?
Uh, which one?
Yeah, that first building, how tall is that?
It's taller than six feet, it's probably seven or eight. Yeah, it's, it's pretty high.
You have a picture of the. Bottom of the sign entrance, it's actually on Pete's property, cause they summed it up in, in the hollow. But yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I thought it was more than six feet, but.
I'm very sure it's eight, it's pretty tall.
Yeah.
Unified sign development plan.
So again, in this case, the developer would have to come in and say, hey, I know you require my six foot, but we wanna do eight foot because.
Right.
And have them come to, now, something like that, would they go to PMC as well as council?
They would go to council.
They'd just go straight to council.
It goes straight to council.
So council, that would be the ones that would be discussing and determining whether or not they're gonna approve all or some of that plan. Or that whatever you call it, commercial or residential.
And and that way it keeps it content neutral. Because I've had ordinances where I've written it as a subdivision monument sign. And as opposed to a commercial monument sign. But that starts telling you, reading what it is as a subdivision.
Right.
So right now, the only things that I've been advised by the attorney is is that we can control billboards. Because they we can have read them because they are off premise from where the business is.
Right.
And political signs, and we'll talk about political signs here in a little bit, and that's. The in in the the ability to identify what the sign is by naming it means you have to read it. So we have to avoid that at all costs, but we have the ability for political signs.
So you're recommending monument signs as a category. Sixty foot feet max, six foot height max.
Right.
Regardless of whether you're gonna locate that monument sign at the entrance of the residential subdivision, or you're gonna put it at a commercial development. Doesn't matter, that's the requirements, but if you want to supersede these, then there's a process. Where you go through that to come to council and pass.
Absolutely. And that's that would be part of now, you could roll that in like we did with Paloma Ranch. Roll that into um part of the plan developer. Absolutely, so that when. When it becomes part of the PD zoning, say, this is what our signs are going to be, this is how they're going to be located and how they're gonna height are going to be. And then you've already uh made that decision, so you can roll that into the PD as well.
And and we will have them like a maintenance. That goes into maintenance only to one of these signs.
There is a whole separate section just on me.
Unfortunately, I see that one, it's a big yard. And uh, like I said, since it's in his yard, so they can come help and load it up for Paul.
If you're told that, uh, we are not responsible for maintenance, but.
I know, but I but I can tell by the way that ditch is there, the water is gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna even fall. Who's responsible for maintenance, have you been told?
Uh, don't I do not know, but it's not us, because if that was the case, then it wouldn't be there.
But remember, the HOA has pushed back. And said, no, contraire, it's on private property, so we're not taking care of it.
I mean.
To me, that's where it makes sense, is the HOA enters into an agreement with the property, I'm saying, hey, we'll be coming onto your property because we'll be making this, cause I've seen that before in other places. But this HOA, for now, anyway, because it's still controlled by a developer, seems resistant to that.
Look, if that's the case, I mean, this is a separate conversation, if it's mine, then. It's a whole different set of things going on with this thing.
That's why I said when Paul's, we could come help and load it up.
Give lease swat a lease agreement.
Are you guys comfortable with what uh Steve is recommending here? We have that again, doesn't matter where the money is, how it's gonna go. If you ever prepare to kind of read it, that's what we're trying to avoid. But we wanna make sure, one, that we have some requires or minimum heights and widths and whatnot dimensions, because again, that's the matter. Uh, but there's also a process by which. There could be a time that we say, yeah, it makes sense here and then gives you the the council, the latitude to go ahead and. Agreed uh some additional heights or maybe additional width or whatever the case might be. These are the signs that are from within the city. Highway, highway could have a bigger wind, which again, is is uh Steven said, you can put the language in there that if you are. On a highway freeway, that's the only place where you'll be able to ever put a monocle, we only have one, that's two eighty seven. All the rest of it all for.
So if 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 you do not want to see these kinds of signs on four oh seven and just only put. Uh, monument signs on four oh seven, you can do that. You can create create the 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 situation where these signs are only allowed along um. Properties within uh and that abut to and on front to highway.
I mean, I see even okay up to like the dollar store because it's still right there next to the highway, but everything this way.
I would rather have a little. So to me, I know that this is categorized as pylon, but if the sun and an example has masonry around it, it's like a target or. Like, that's when he looks good, but if it's just a pole, a monopole, then that's something that I would not want.
I'll be honest, I hate the pile of sign. I hate that I can see it from my house. Like like I'm five miles away from it, but I guess he'll see it, it drives me nuts. So. If you, as as he said, if you're wanting to regulate signage along uh major curial, like say F and four oh seven. To your question, you say, well, what about the old sign that's there now for Dollar General, what happens? You wanna explain non-conforming use and how that works?
Sure, so if we outlaw a sign that is in existence today, they have the right to continue to use that sign. Until one of two situations, that the sign itself is damaged greater than fifty percent of its value. Which is same thing if the building was damaged and it was non-conform, then they would have to bring the building up to um. Current standards, if that if that changes occur. Um, the other way is is that if it becomes abandoned and or a new use comes in and then we can at that point talk to them about. Reworking the sign so that it becomes something new.
Dollar store closed down and somebody else bought the building?
We can certainly ask them, but it it would be, usually they they allow the sign because since it is is a asset to the property. You know, and uh amortization is the word that I was looking for. I knew it was gonna come to me anyway, so amortization is the word, so um with billboards that are dilapidated, other kinds of things like that. You can, because signs are are an asset to the property, that you can, if it is not conforming, go through an amortization. Period where you would declare that the sign needs to come down and you would allow them for a certain amount of time period. To keep the sign so that they get the value of the sign, that investment that they have in. Amortization. Robin, when I said that, she knew what I was talking about.
Well, it feels like that, what's your thoughts on those signs on bullshit?
Yeah. Like, uh, so my point about this is like, I'd rather, I kind of like. These new style design, like if we are gonna have commercial on there versus just a monument that's the slats, like. Store, 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 you know, like that's that's me personally, um, so but I. To me, that's two different kind of sign, like just a pole and a sign versus uh. Something that has masonry on it and, you know, looks like your example, that's a little bit different to me.
Seeing the pictures of the old stores in the sixties and the seventies, I actually liked those signs. They were futuristic looking, but they were, I don't know.
If you drive through Grand Prairie, north Grand Prairie, uh, north of the old uh marine base, there's still some of those signs left that of those. There that the the uh the the astronaut type signs.
Yeah, they remind me of the Jetson.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would rather a mass. Multi panel sign also, but I don't wanna another dollar king.
Yeah, the pole, yeah. So how how can we differentiate that again?
Well, what we do is we say, okay, then um this sign, we don't, we only allow along um highway two eighty seven.
A pole, pole, pole.
Because again, when we're talking about. Fifty feet, that's 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 how they're gonna do it, and it may be a monocle, it may be a double pole. But that's that's gonna be the least expensive is uh, when when you get over over thirty feet with masonry. It gets really expensive.
And just to be clear, we're allowing monument signs or the other, uh, what do you call it, multi?
Multi panel signs.
Multi panel signs. On two eighty seven, if that's what they end up deciding they want, but the only place. That we will ever allow monocle signs going forward is just gonna be off of two eighty seven.
Right now, I have it where you could have it along four oh, four oh seven, but I'm hearing that maybe we wanna just limit that.
So that's what I'm saying, is it sounds like they don't want monocle signs anywhere along four oh seven. We can write that in there so that the only place that we're gonna allow monocle signs would be off of, and I think he's added there, highway freeway, which in our case. Is two eighty seven and that's it.
Or even the service road right there, there's, you know, something right there.
Well, yeah, as long as it's along that that strip of our city, I think you guys are okay with that. We just don't want it coming approaching further into our community, like downtown seven, anywhere on twenty two sixty four. That pilot sign is so big and it's only one, it gets so windy up here, how, what's the highest that it was seen?
Wind speed? I am not a mechanical engineer. Not a structural engineer, so um. Wish my friend Don was here, he'd be able to tell you what the wind load is, but um they do actually have to be, uh, when when the plans come in. We do get a a sign permit coming in, we do get a a statement from the engineer that says what that wind speed is and what that. And that wind load is, because they are allowed to have a certain amount of sway within the within the sign to be able to.
I think you're gonna want better also.
Right, yeah, absolutely, so there is a, there is a little bit of of sway, I mean, e- even tall buildings kind of sway a few bit, so. Uh, but it absolutely, everything has to be engineered because it's not just the pole itself that you see above ground, it's the footings and the foundation. On which it is built that are gonna be able to keep its center and straight.
So then, just to recap, so we're talking, we're saying monocle signs, the only place it'll be along freeway highway, which in our case is gonna be two eighty seven. Correct? Well, listen, I agree.
We can, yeah, we got it. One thing also is setback, and we'll talk about this also again when we're talking about right away. But setback distances is that we wanna make sure that there are fifteen feet from the leading edge of the sign, regardless if it is the up. Thirty feet high or if it's gonna be down on the ground, at least fifteen feet from the uh right away line, so that property line. There's that separation distance from there.
So not right up on the.
Not right up on the roadway, not right up on the property line.
So how far back are we thinking for the monument signs too, cause they're the ones, okay, cause they're the ones that block, you know. When you're trying to.
And it's not just, it's not just a setback distance from the road, but also if you're at a at your driveway. And your driveway is, they have to also be set back behind, you have to put basically a twenty five foot. Um, uh, triangle at the at the intersection there from the from the edge of pavement to the edge of pavement on the curb. So that way, when you're on approach coming up to the uh to that thing, you wanna be able to look all the way down without that sign being in your way.
Uh, I know I was. I'm a little bit late, we go through all the different types of signs around here.
I mean, he should go through them.
Yeah, no, we did still, but is there something you wanted to address on any of those?
Well, I just, you know, the a banner sign and, you know, like I said the other day, the billboard, the alprimes billboards, I mean, a huge banner. Uh, so are those something that we can say no to?
Yes, it's actually what Steve was saying is you can say no more billboards. We can write that into the orbit, so. And yeah, well, except for that one, Joe Max property for sure. And like the that wind sign that you're holding right now that I'm seeing, even the band sign. Yes, he was saying, we can regulate those for that, some of those are not allowed at all. And others, like the the band signs, which people will use for like garage sales or. Birthday parties or whatever, H five D directional signs, they come over here for, you know, sell the puppies or whatever. Uh, those would could be allowed without any read of, what'd you call it, yard signs? It says in the yard signs. We can set the dimensions on them. Uh, you can set the amount of time that they're allowed to be out, but they have to be on private property, not like what you're seeing there, I have people's pictures and a lot of those. Look like they were rivaling, right? So Isaac's always having to go out and pick up all the band inside. Because they're not allowed, so so to answer the question, yes, sir, we can, and I understand from the nod that I saw that. This council is wanting to regulate and and not allow feeding your billboards.
Yeah, I mean, these banner signs, they're just, I don't like them because if they set them on the road, sometimes it makes it hard to see, especially when they're at corners.
That's the whole point.
Offshoot accidents because people couldn't see them on those signs.
And so that's the whole point of why we don't wanna allow those, and it gives them code enforcement and the teeth that they're gonna need with this new order to say, hey. You guys, we're getting rid of this because it, you know, it's not, it's a violation of our ordinance, but also. You go a step further than that case, it's like it could be a safety hazard, it's 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 blocking or violating that visual triangle that um. You have at intersections that uh Stephen was referencing.
And I don't like them because the wind tears them up and people don't.
They fade really fast too.
Yeah, they fade in the sun and and in this area, y'all know, we we get a lot of wind. Nobody else is getting wind, but we get wind.
That's just even from your staff talking, so you know.
That I wouldn't have a problem, but just put it up. The board here should be down.
That's what I was gonna say.
But they live up all the time.
We could write it down, then he could be up for, you know.
I mean, we could compare someone that has the yard sign.
Well. The feather flags, I I really hate feather flags, just impersonal, and that's that's my big thing, I if we're gonna do. Temporary signs, I like, I don't mind uh two pole banners, you know, or a uh or the yard signs, which we can limit to two by three. Uh, and so they'll be on the state kind of stuff and I've got some language about that also.
We can't put the feather banner with the same premises or just you don't like them?
I I don't like them, I don't think they're, I don't think they're worthwhile and I think they they really mess up your your visual quality here to me. I mean, if you really want them, I will put them in there, that's that's the direction.
It's our, it's our position to say what kind of garage sale sign or what kind of church sign they can have, just because we don't like it.
Well, we are not, we are not talking about what what is on the sign.
I'm not saying what what style of sign.
Right.
So some was to get, like there's a house for sale, they want to put for sale for their own good house, or they want to do. The feather sign for the day of the church, I don't think that we have the right to tell them what style of sign they could have for that day.
Well, that's what our job is, is to tell what kind of sign people can have, like, we do have the right to say that we can or can't, and I I don't like them because, like I said. I can name like three or four accidents that these things have caused in the last year. They're just, you know, and it's hard to say, well, you can put it up as your the church, but you can't because you're a builder or something. Because you have to hear a lot of all or none, right?
Yes, that's true.
And and I absolutely understand your point, and I want you to understand that that I absolutely see that. What the problem is and way that we always have to regulate things is that we have to regulate for the for the people who are going to use that that right. And so that if we.
But they would still have the option for a banner sign on Sundays to.
We can.
Your driver or whatever.
And 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 this this ordinance doesn't touch holiday decorations at all. In fact, there's a definition in their holiday decorations, this ordinance, holiday decorations are are fine, we're not gonna mess with those.
How about a special permitting grand entry, uh, grand opening, so.
See, the thing is, is that I had a language about that, that we're calling it a grand opening sign, so that's talking about what's happening on the sign itself. So that means that it's a special uh.
I would like for our other businesses to be able to have some kind of temporary flashing, you know, signs for two days or a day.
But they can, they just can't have this.
So what is that stat when we saw last time where it was the, when we didn't like the long bill?
I'm glad it's on the camera too. Now, the the thing is, is that um. The language is really difficult for me because even if you call it a special event, if you call it a grand opening, you you know, those kinds of things are. Speaking as to what the sign is saying. And in in. In that limitation that we have, it is easy to us for someone to. Interpret that and we were gonna grant you, oh, well, this is a special event, well, why is my event not special? Why am I being, the the thing is, is we're we're, we have to avoid the ability for a. Administrative official who was making a decision on the sign to have a it 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 have a. A a decision point, kind of thing.
So is there any way to have a section that just says permissible temporary signs? Can be used for three days or whatever, and that followed the yard, you know, yard sale sign, the banner signs.
And that's.
But it leaves out political signs.
Yes, yeah, we're we're not talking about political signs just yet, Robin, we we got that. She she said it was about political signs, but we're not talking about political signs yet, we got a whole slide.
Temporary use.
Right.
I mean, there are other temporarys, just don't like this banner size, the whole.
I agree, let me ask you a question. If someone, so if we say we don't want these, if someone put one out in the morning for church or whatever it says. What is enforcement on that look like? How long is enforcement? What does that look like?
Like they put it us, they put it out before church.
And then they took it down. That's why I'm asking, what is enforcement, you want us to.
You know, I should say this, you know, we're not gonna cap. Yes, right on Friday, we see that Friday evenings after five.
So what, what we're trying to do is enough of the people that are leaving them out, becoming dilapidated, right?
Right, so you're gonna catch those that put it out on a Sunday, and here it is Wednesday, it's still up there. Isaac's driving around, it's like, hey, wait a minute, that's a prohibited sign, right? Those are the ones we're gonna catch. But like, you know, these real church signs are pretty, pretty smart. They'll come out after five on Friday, and they're just dropping a bunch of them and rise away.
Yeah, we'll put them out on Sunday.
Afternoon and start picking them up, because they know on Monday when the city opens up, the code enforcement guys could be driving around. That's why. Isaac sometimes, particularly during the warmer months, uh, he works weekends, so he'll work, you know, maybe a day, uh, Saturday or Sunday as opposed to. Monday to Friday, and that's when he's able to see some of the stuff that goes on on weekends that we typically don't catch, because we're not expecting the city. Staff to be working on the weekend.
But what, what is he, does he take the sign? Does he talk to the, talk to somebody? How does that, what does that look like?
You wanna explain the process on the bandit signs?
So, uh, the bandit signs, if they're left below the right of way, I'll just typically take it. Because if they're right on the side of the road, but if we're speaking in the measures of the banner signs, I, I have not. I haven't touched them, the, I haven't touched them, uh, or even, even discussed them. So if, if that was written into our ordinance. The way I would probably go about it is I would not just hang up their signs, I would just go talk to the owner of the church, the preacher and be like, look. These are no longer prohibited in our, our city ordinance. If you could, if our ordinance says they can have them in the parking lot, just further back, or whatever our ordinance states. I'd go based on whatever, whatever we have. No, I would not just drive down to a church and, uh, he got the banner sign, who does? Come quick, we'll, we'll chat. No, it'd be a conversation for us. Definitely.
I'd be comfortable.
So, so for us to, to kind of move the conversation a little bit, um. The intent is that you want to have a little bit more leeway with temporary signs. We can define what temporary signs are. And we can define that temporary signs do not require a permit, but you need to keep them on your private property. Or private property that is on, that is the, that is given permission to.
Yeah, keep them far enough back to not be a visual deterrent.
Right, so, okay, um.
And that would include the yard signs as well.
The one that says the dog. Do we want anything, a, a banner to probably, you know, three foot by six foot or eight foot? Thirty-six, thirty-six, let's call it thirty-six square feet, because that's what typical sign size are.
Well, I think if we're gonna take these signs out of play, we should allow a bigger sign, so they can get another one.
Well, thirty-six, thirty-six is the standard sign, banner sign, and that's what we're, we're, we're limiting political signs for.
I still don't like these banner signs at all, so I don't.
You don't like the flag, the, the fa- feather flags?
These like six to eight foot tall flag signs, I don't, I don't like them.
Yeah, we do the, there are signs to make them, that can be bigger, then they can get a, your invited sign. And still be able to put it out.
So I can, I can, I've, I've got some direction from you, letting me come back with some language on what temporary signs are gonna look like. The, the biggest thing is, is that, um.
Who knew we were gonna be so difficult?
No, no, we can do temporary signs, uh, we also have to, we also have to. Remember that we can't call if, if it's a special event. Well, how much time after a special event? Well, we can't do that, because then it's a special event and we have to read what's on the sign. The other thing is, and that's different, we can put the time limit on, uh, political signs.
So what do you suggest for a time limit on a temporary sign?
That's what I'm saying, is that I don't think we can put one, because it would require us to read what's on the sign.
I'm, I'm with Pete, I'm okay with not allowing this, this style of banner sign. And I'm, I'm comfortable with the way the enforcement is. I think that that would lead to the proper direction together, when we have proper enforcement on it. Cause they could say, well, I picked it up, and then I put it back out, so it's a fresh start, fresh start time, you know.
But the thing is, is that what that does is gets rid of the bandit signs that he's talking about, especially the ones that are talking about, um, real estate. Uh, the ones that talk about, um, uh, let me put your Christmas lights up in the, in the, in the fall, the ones that, uh, you know. Whore sale cheap houses, I'll buy your house for, you know, dollars on the bank, you know, kind of thing, so.
I buy a lever.
Right, yeah, those are the kinds of signs we wanna get, we wanna get rid of. All right, let's talk about a couple other signs, and then I'll let you get back to the rest of the meeting here, um.
Paul, so you, before you move.
Sure.
So on the monument signs.
Yeah.
Just to recap, so we're talking about just the monocles on two eighty-seven. That means we can do monument signs on four oh seven, and you're wanting to limit them to six foot. So if we're doing, if we're playing towards multi-industrial or res, or um. Retail on four oh seven. The monument signs that I'm looking at on, online that have multiple agents, multiple whatevers, they are well over six foot tall.
Right.
So.
So that's why I was proposing that we would do the, um, smaller ability to put them multi-panel, panel signs.
Yeah.
As, uh, the councilman was talking about on four oh seven, and that we would eliminate. The whole nylon signs from four oh seven. So they would have the ability to do something like this.
Okay, the multi panels.
Yeah, so that would be for like, i- if we got a shopping center that had a few different stores in.
Well, if you approve it, it could be anybody.
But what if it's like a McDonald's? Are, are we gonna still do a monument, or are they still gonna be able to do this?
They can still be able to do this on one four.
So they could have thirty foot walking paths.
Or, you know, if, if we, if we can change that and make that small, we can make that twenty feet on four oh seven.
But they still would have the ability to do that type of sign.
Correct.
Just no bulbs.
That's what I need to, that's what I need to verify, thank you.
Okay. So let's talk about wall signs. So wall signs, we're talking about individual signs above a building. Or a leased space. So when we look at that, if you're in a multi-tenant building, and you're gonna go to Subway and it's right in the middle. Subway has a leased space of X amount of feet. So what we wanna do is, let's say it's twenty-five feet. So what, where the sign is going to be, a, they are only allowed one sign. Above all. Then, that height of that, because it's gonna be less than a twenty-foot plate height, which is the ceiling, not the, the dock coming in through. Our peak of the building, just the ceiling height, then their sign is a maximum of four feet. And it's allowed seventy-five percent of their width of their leased space.
So a twenty-five foot would be eighteen foot.
Correct. Eighteen by, by four. So the wider your space is, the more sign you get, or the taller your building is. What this allows for is Target comes in, or Pet Boys, or something like that, and they've got a longer building. They can have more signs, and their signs can be taller. Because their buildings are tall. What that does, because Target usually comes in with their prime target sign, and then it talks about pharmacy, or they talk about. You know, the grocery, and they talk about. Yeah, whatever it is that they have on the exterior on there, they can advertise those things, but they have to be within that limit of. The four signs that they would have. And it's also available on each facade that is facing onto a public right of.
Can you explain this chart on the right that says how many signs they can get? The width in feet, so if it's a hundred and fifty feet in width, they can have four, is that what that's saying?
Yes, so if it is greater than a hundred and fifty feet, they can have four signs, that's your target.
I see.
Okay, if it is a subway inside the building, it's gonna be less than sixty feet wide.
Yeah.
They get one sign.
Interesting, okay.
That is the sum of what we would control on all signs. If they've got a window sign, typically cities do not, do not, that's, that's a, we don't control that.
What if it's like a two-story? I know there's some shopping centers or whatever that have stores down here and doing. Either stores or business offices up here.
They would still be along the width of their leased space.
Okay.
And then that plate height changes, because they've got a plate height for the first floor, and then you gotta plate height for the second floor.
Okay, but the second floor can put their sign above theirs.
If, if so happens, I, because. You're seeing fewer of those being built like that because of ADA regulations. And they would be required to, if on a sec, on a second floor, would be required to install an. Yeah, the older ones.
Go up the stairs.
Right.
Yeah, still a bunch of two stories. And there's, there's also, also the gyms on the second floor.
Sure.
Just to go up the stairs.
But, but, but new ones are, are required by building code. If you're having a commercial space on the second floor, you have to have a. You have to have a ADA accessible.
So a lot of people don't wanna do that, so it's more money.
Really expensive. Um, so that's kind of, kind of wall signs. Roof signs are a little different. So roof signs are, if you have a slowly roofed mountain, you can see on the, but the side elevation is what that looks like. Or if you have a elevation of above on a flat roof now. What we are trying to look at is, and again, uh, the one on the bottom would not be allowed by those ordinance. The top of the roof sign shall not extend higher than the roof be. So we would not allow something like that, but the one on the top, we would allow.
And this is for safety for wind or for aesthetic?
Mostly aesthetic. These are not roof signs. These are wall signs. So if you have the sign above a, uh, canopy. Or if you have a sign on the side elevation on a false facade. Or if you have, uh, the elevation on, and that's what they call mansers now, because that are false facade. Builds up, uh, false parrot. That's what they call, yeah, they say nobody does a banner sign, getting worn.
No, they, they, they'll do the, the, the false parrot.
So, and then again, a, a pet peeve mount is basically a metal canopy or something like that. Those are wall signs, and we would regulate them just like wall signs. Now, roof signs are a part of, uh, something that a lot of people would say, oh, well, I wanna have, you know, the. You go to babes, babes got a roof sign, you know, cause it's all big and neon and that kind of thing like that. That, something like babes comes in, unified sign plan, come in and show us. We wanna make, we wanna see. Maybe, maybe, like, look it, but typically, let's not put a purpose. I don't know, they, they, they closed, they closed the rib eye place in Decatur. I thought they were doing well there. They really didn't? That's too bad. It's a misplaced, it's funny to notice. Well, I know, but it's not, doesn't have the same vanishes home to a downtown center though. Did you like the rib eye sign?
No.
They kind of seem a little dramatic.
Well, I guess that explains it.
He's so small. All right, let's talk about, there's a couple other smaller signs that we'll talk about at a future point. There's like. When we get to an urban center, we have like A-frame signs on the sidewalk, or you have like a sign that hangs from a canopy. Or if you've got one that is a blade sign that is, uh, perpendicular to the facade of the building kind of stuff, so you can see it as you're walking through. Those are, there's, there's some regulations for those. The, those are basically gonna be mostly concerned with pedestrian, uh, or way. Make sure that it's appropriately anchored to the structure, or that if it stays out of your pedestrian way, and then have at least nine foot height. Um, clearance, so that if you're carrying something, you're not gonna whack the sign too often kind of thing, or if you're, you know, you don't wanna hit. Anybody, and then get it down to where somebody gets it. All right, we're gonna talk about political signs.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
So if a business was wanting to count them, they say their business require a surface line. But our city ordinance will not allow that, then we do like a unified.
Absolutely.
And the reason I said it is John Mary English or that way.
Right.
John Mary requires, if they have two signs and two signs only, and you have to have one where you know this.
Right, and, and, but we're not going to the point of Capel that required every sign to be white. And every sign to be a font, font of this size, and that they had a backing of red brick. And that Capel absolutely did that, and they got away with it for a long time. Well, I mean, McDonald's quarter. But the other, another one was, uh, uh. Flower mount, uh, requiring Home Depot to tone down to orange. And if you go to the Home Depot in Flower Mount, just north of Grapevine, just, just on the north side of it, where the plate ends. Um, it is, um, it's kind of more of a burnt orange, it's toned down. They fought and fought and fought, they should. So, I mean.
I didn't know we could do that, like. Well, there is, I, I read an article about a McDonald's in. I don't know, Arizona, I guess, that their M had to be blue.
Yeah.
Which is weird.
Well, Santa Fe, the, the Mexico, um, was going to require the Walmart to be a plebiscite. Because they require plebiscite style structures, so that would have all of the, um, stucco on the outside and all that kind of stuff. Walmart said no, and said, well, what, what are we gonna do? Because we want a Walmart, and Walmart said, well, why, why do you wanna have it that way? So they said, well, for aesthetics. So Walmart said, well, what if you can't see the Walmart? So, okay, so they dug a hole, a big one. And they depressed the entire building down into the hole, and it is a typical Walmart, but when you're at the road level, all you see is the Walmart sign.
What you were gonna say, like, spring text, or spring down by Houston, where all their businesses are behind trees and.
Woodlands, the woodlands, so woodlands are all behind trees, and they all have small signs.
So, I don't mind the South Lake, does a lot of that stuff too, and I like the fact that all those signs look, look. I mean, I don't think we need to go that extreme, but I, I like that. Look, I mean, they're all, they're all kind of the same structure, they're all, they're similar, they're all similar colors.
Be sure it's more uniform, though. Not as.
I mean, the signs still have the businesses' colors, they're just, you know, like the monument signs, everyone was built exactly the same, it just has a different logos and.
All right, so political signs, this is a sign that we are allowed to call as what it is because. Of the nature of what the sign is, and a lot of the political sign language actually comes out of, uh, Texas Electoral Code. What we wanna do is make sure that we have the ability for political candidates to advertise themselves. But they do not become a proliferation of abandoned signs and, and, uh. Uh, again, the same issues that we have with visibility and, and turnout rates and all that stuff. So, um, first of all, let's address the polling stations. So this building is a polling station, and so they're allowed to have their signs within a hundred feet of the, um, polling station front door. So we're not limiting that, uh, that ability. But what we're calling is, is that they need to be the two by three, uh. Uh, two foot by three foot, small, weekend, faraway type signs. And they have the, uh, you talked about they can't have it larger than, uh, the typical. Signing, you just put the states in. Uh, obviously, we don't have what the sign permit is required, uh, we want to make sure that, um. If they're gonna be put up along our roadways where they can be seen, they need to be on private property, not the public right of way. And they need to have the property owner's permission to put the signs on there, so that if the property owner starts taking the signs down. Then we have the, uh, ability to back them up on.
So if we see them just up and down four oh seven or whatever.
You see them up and down four oh seven.
Private property, so no, if they're on inside the fence line, that's fine.
Right.
If they're outside the fence line, they're in public right of way, then that's supposed to be there.
So the judge sat on the thing on my stop sign for two weeks, shouldn't be there.
There should be nothing attached to a stop sign.
It's one of the bandit signs, but it's been pushed it right off.
So if you only place stop signs. You only place, place stop signs in right of way, just like you waited for, is in right of way. So, yes, if you see it where the stop sign is, that's a right of way, there should not be a sign.
And he has a law selling the wrong place.
Yeah, so just call code enforcement. And he has a lot selling the wrong place, yeah, so just call code enforcement and we fair you. And uh, you know, now, I also want to be clear. One, we're not always a polling place here, as soon as I said you guys know, for time to time, West County picks this, and sometimes they don't. So if we're not a polling place, they're not allowed to put. Any political signs in here, say, our municipal complex, number one, number two. If we are a polling place. As he said, you're able to put in, normally they line the driveway, come here, that's no big deal, no harm to the father, stays out of our way, we leave them alone. But that does not give you the right to put it at any city of lands, and we should not be putting these signs up at the park. Cause that's not a polling place, this is a polling place, that is not. So we're able to remove them from city lands, these facilities that are not the polling place location, correct?
We're going down, may not be placed within ten feet of street pavement located on any public property with the exception of a polling place. Or within a public basement or right of way.
So again, I just want to make sure the council is clear. Time, place, and manner restrictions, we're looking for political signs, yes, bring it. Bring them here, as long as they meet the time, place, and manner restrictions, you put them up here, but we are a polling location. But we're not a polling location, you can't put him here, nor can you put him on any other city facility that is not a polling location like a park. We don't have one now, but that's going to change, we're going to end up having more, right? So we got to protect our our public facilities.
So when we talk about removing signs, because we are identifying these signs specifically. We can put in a timeline on them, and we say that they need to be removed seven calendar days after the completion of the election. So if there is a runoff election, that's not the end of the election. So if there's a runoff, they can continue to keep their signs up.
The runoff is normally a couple of months later. So like they just stay there the whole time?
Yes.
Like since this is a polling station for the initial election. But it may not be for the second one, so that I have to remove from here, if it's a polling place, the first one, but you don't know if it's the second one. Yeah, well, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'll I'll put the runoff.
Right, so they have the lineup down the driveway here, because it's a polling station for the election. But you don't know after that. If it's going to be a polling station for the next one, so are they allowed to stay in the driveway until the next election?
No, if it if it ends as being a polling, there's a separate pause there. If the polling place signs must be removed within twenty-four hours after polls close.
Well, what if, what if you don't know what it's going to be?
Well, and then it's going to be again another two months before.
All the driver, they have twenty-four hours to remove.
Correct.
If there's not a sign permit required. How do we know who is supposed to remove them?
And there is, there is. So each sign of a political sign has has a is required by Electoral Code to have a um uh. Contact of who is responsible for the sign.
It'll say paid for by, so legally it's supposed to say, and that one that you're talking about does not say that either. It says possibly paid for by, and that's the people who are responsible.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, there's nothing about that.
John, did I hit the points that you wanted?
I'm sure they're clear, and they're good with the time, place, and manner restrictions, because. Who's going to get the call from the candidate running for county judge or sheriff or head dog catcher? Is going to be the elected official for our city, so I'm saying no, it's not great. Call probably to the mayor or one of you all. Complaining about, you know, why the city is doing this and that, and you're violating my civil rights and free speech and blah, blah, blah. And of course, your essence should be contact the city administrator and let him explain what our sign rule says as far as regulating political signs.
With state regulations.
Absolutely.
And again, this is why we're doing it, because we want to make sure that we're not violating, especially the. The Supreme Court case law that the city attorney had mentioned to you all. It violates uh us reading the sign and categorizing them.
So um, your attorney pointed me in the direction of of this particular graphic to help explain where political signs can be located. So if we're telling them that they cannot be placed in the right of way, this graphic explains what right of way is. It's not the curve to curve distance, it is the area in which your right of way the city maintains. That may include the sidewalk, they may include areas that does outside the sidewalk. Usually, a a typical street width is uh right of way is fifty feet, and the street width is thirty-one foot curve to curve. So that area add extra nine feet on uh is uh. Is within the right of way, and so the signs do not need to be in the right of.
Citizens and.
The hard part about that is they're not uniform, but my house goes all the way to the river for some stupid reason. I mean, it goes through the ditch all the way to the sides of the river, so there's no public right of way at all.
So John, those are the signs I've got. Oh, we're in time for elimination, one more.
Yeah, those are fair.
All right, so uh, a little bit of technical. With bang on this, so there are three different ways of measuring illumination. So we've got them up there, so where you have. The lumens is how much light is radiant. That is where your your, you know, the intensity of that light is, is, you know, you can see the light where the light source is. Lux is the illumination of the area. Around, how much light do you get onto the ground so that people can see? And then the third one is a a candela, which is how much intensity of the light is coming out. So what we want to do is reduce. In dark sky, we want to reduce the candellas. And so what we're looking at, and the regulation I've been looking at is reduction of signage. So that no sign is greater than seven hundred and fifty candellas per square view. So that is a form of measurement called a knit. And the sign industry knows what a knit is, and so what we're trying to do is make things. When we talk about our ordinance, is we want to make it easier to implement and easier for your staff to understand. If we are all speaking the same language as the people who are designing and building the signs, that makes things a little bit easier. So what we want to do also is uh to what councilman's uh comments last. Uh, time war was how do we make sure that um sign intensity reduces when it needs to? Those doors closed for the night or whatnot, so we're requiring for electronic message boards. And any other kind of illumination of signs, that they have a automatic dimmer reader installed through a photocell. A mechanical switch basically that dims the light, or especially with electronic message boards. Then they have a software uh ability to dim the sign. Also, an electronic message words, we've got all the language we talked about last time about, they're not going to be flashing, they're not going to be uh animated. They have uh twelve seconds that they have to remain static before they go to the next image. We're not saying what those images are, we're just saying that that static image allows us to have a little bit of time. Before it's constantly moving around and becoming a distraction. We also um can control, and what the language that I'm working with for illumination. Is not only this intensity uh control, but also if it is going to be externally lit. That they're going to have to be shielded, so that they're not throwing light out up into the atmosphere, they're going to be shielded and pointed. So that those those external lit. Lights, which does a really good job, are going to be focused onto the uh spot they're supposed to be focused. So we can, we can require.
So. I think one of my goals was like, you know, wall sign lights and, you know, like. Chicken Express, all those up, like that those things would turn their lights off when they're closed.
Then let me, let me look and make sure that that the language is is going to allow for that, and see how we can make sure that happens. Talk about electronic message boards, we're talking about. Illumination. Anything else that uh? As you've been thinking about it. We want to talk about. So let me, um, I've I've already started writing this words, and uh so I'm uh going to take your feedback. And make some edits, then I'm going to come back uh uh sometime next month, and we'll talk again and see where we're at. And uh probably give you an initial draft, going to be very rough. Let you kind of digest that a little bit, we want your, we want your honest opinions before we take this to you. In order for you to approve it, we don't want, we'll have it as a code uh. Robin, this is in the. Is in, it's not in, it's not in zoning, is it?
Uh, no, I think it's actually.
Okay, so if it's a bad, it just needs to go to the to you, it does not have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission, um, because with as a ordinance, we. I guess we don't have to have a as a public hearing, but uh.
Well, if you're going to have penal provisions, it's probably just as well if you do.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that's my presentation for this evening. Again, please, if you come up against a sign that you have a question about. Either inside the city or something that is outside the city that you want either. Want us to prohibit, or you want us to to say, hey, this is what I really want to see. Please go through John and Susan, let me know, so that I can get it, and we can figure out how that sign got made. And how we can uh accommodate for it in the organs. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, that's all we have on the side, I'm certain. Do you have a motion to adjourn the work session? And the time served is seven fifty-one. So at seven fifty-two, we will start the great list session of our meeting.
Ricky Downs.
The people that they were able to allow us together here today. And to make decisions and. Move the, in the future of the city along, and that we'll be able to listen to our. Our hearts and our citizens and. We'll make the great uh the right decisions, and we say these things in the name of God, Jesus Christ, amen. A budget is issued by the United States of America. Just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Stephen, have a good night. Announcements or special permissions? Uh, no announcements or special permissions. Sue the mayor's report, uh, the only thing that I want to bring the council's attention is. Remind the council that places one, three, and five are up for election uh in the main general election. If you plan to file, you have until February the thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. However, our city secretary is leading tomorrow to go train in Brown Rock, and won't be back until next Monday. So you either catch her tonight, or you can catch her sometime next week, and when she comes back. Because she does have to actually notarize your signature on one or one of forms.
Yes.
Right there. So um, please, if you're planning to run for those positions. Uh, make sure you fill out your packet, if you need to have any questions, you can reach out to Susan, and she can answer for you. The other thing is, we are ordering some uh more shirts um. For that has our city logo. Um, it, Susan's got a great place where she found some deals on some shirts, I know one customer actually brought his own shirts. So that we can like put decal or embroidery on there. If you have any, would you please get with Susan as soon as possible, because uh we have an embroidery, we found, she found.
Bridgeport for twelve dollars a shirt, and that was a lot cheaper than what we were paying. I got the horse, and Ricky actually told me what he wanted, so I've got it.
Yeah, so, so again, if if you have any questions, will I say got a different shirt, style shirt?
Why is this so special? Maybe we just want. Cause you're like a special guy.
Actually wanted long sleeve shirts. That's long sleeve as well. Did you, I sent you an email, you, we talked about colors, I didn't get a long sleeve.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, she's busy with her, because she's got uh. Some nice, uh, we can get some shirts, uh, pretty good price, and then we'll take them to Bridgeport to get embroidery, so you can get updated shirts. Okay, that's all I have. The synergy, all the hair just been sitting in it, are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be. In acted by a hall, by one motion, and I would think it would be considered injured by the city administrator. Mayor or any member of the city council, and will be considered after approval of the consent agenda. The other three items, approval of the city council meeting minutes from December fifth. Approved the December twenty twenty-five fiscal report, and approved the first order twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six investment.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those players say aight? Well, we're in a new business. Public hearing to accept public comments and discuss the petition by mountain families, the Golden Living Trust. To the city of New Fairview, that's for determining the availability, visibility. I've created the Pioneer State Public Improvement District within the corporate elements of the city. And assisting of a hundred thirteen, what, seven, eight, nine acres of land situated generally east of Pioneer Road, South Falls, Epic Falls. So Mayor, you don't mind, we should go ahead and fish it up enough for public hearing, for the public hearing and seven fifty-seven. Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor, so council, I'm back again, um. The impression homes and the mud developer have assured me that they are very, very, very close. To finally solidify the agreements involving the water. That impression homes is going to be purchasing. From uh the mud, as well as paying for the infrastructure. That is going to be needed to be in place to burn the water over from the mud to the uh. Development and throughout the development, and also assure the city. That we are not responsible for any of that cost, including maintenance, so. You get a hot summer month and waterline main breaks. It's the responsibility of the mud, not the responsibility of the city, so. Uh, so again, I told developer that I do not feel comfortable wearing the pit. For the council to approve until we have the development agreement uh in place, and you guys. So I'm asking you again to. Make a motion to continue the public hearing, I closed it, but continue the public hearing to February second, twenty twenty-six meeting. To allow more time for the finalization of the terms of the development agreement. I stand for any questions you have.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearings at February second, twenty twenty-six meeting, to allow more time to the finalization of the terms of the development.
All local board. And public hearing was over at seven fifty-nine. Well.
Maybe one day we'll be able to close it.
Yeah, right? All right, so next we'll move to receive, consider, and act on a resolution twenty twenty-six oh one dash oh two. One eight four, approving an intermodal agreement between the city of Justin and the city of New Fairview. And other participating cities for a regional animal control feasibility study. Thank you, Mayor, I will take this one gladly, uh. I believe we've had a discussion where you are aware that the city of Justin has been looking at. Doing a feasibility study to determine, uh, if it made sense for them to build an animal shelter, start up animal control. build an animal shelter, start up animal control operation services and involve partners in that process. Uh, they make reservations in various cities. Um, and as it stands right now, we have um the city of, besides Justin, you can, on the Dent County side, you've got the city of Ponder, the city of uh Northlake and the city of uh Crum. And then on the West County side, you have the city of Rome, the city of Fairview, city of Decatur. Who am I missing? I'm missing somebody.
Yeah, the way you guys have done it.
The way is normal, in Rome. Oh, Rome, Rome, city of Rome.
Pretty simple.
Oh, Paradise, there is Paradise. Okay, Paradise, Rome, city of Fairview, Decatur. Um, they met with the West County Sheriff's uh office and they stated that while they understand it's gonna be helpful to them, they are not interested in contributing towards a feasibility study. We met last week with uh the Dent County Administrator, Joel Gonzalez, and his executive team. They also understand the benefits it's gonna be for Dent County. He said he's gonna go visit with the Dent County judge, should get back to us to see if they're interested in participating financially. You will note that in the proposal that, or the uh agreement that uh city of Justin sent over to us and to other cities, it states that we have a not to exceed amount of four thousand dollars per city or per person uh entity, I should say. In this feasibility study, you also have attached the proposal of the company that we are going with to do the feasibility study and that it's commonly architects and consultants. And you can see in their uh submission of proposals, some of the work that's done a- around the area here uh to build animal shelters or animal care facilities, including uh the one in Dent. I worked with them and we built the uh, lived in that animal care center for the city of Dent. Um. This is actually very exciting, I think, for us because we are getting very little support from West County. We've gotten very little support from West County. West County doesn't seem to be interested in doing anything to elevate the service level. Uh, and uh we have, you know, we've got Dent County, but Dent County, same situation. They're not interested in elevating their level of service. Uh, although they are interested if this facility is built when Justin is entered to a contractual agreement with the city of Justin, just like they currently have with the city of Dent, so that any animals they pick up, they'll go take to that shelter and then pay whatever, you know, per dog, per day, kind of rate that they have agreed to with the city, so. There's a possibility that even if they don't participate financially in the feasibility study, they're very interested in talking to Justin or however this thing is uh uh panning out to enter to some sort of contract so that when they're on the west side of Dent County, they can bring any animals here. Again, we're only talking domestic animals. We're talking cats, you know, um turtles, dogs. We're not talking horses, sheep, goats, none of that for the Justin facility. The feasibility study is gonna look at governance. We don't know if it's gonna be a city-owned, city of Justin-owned facility and then we all, you know, pay some sort of pro rata share, or maybe we set this up as a separate, like a five oh one C three structure. We have a board of directors, every participating city, uh, we're dealing with the West Coast VA has got a member on the board, so you have a say, you control the finances, expenditures, what have you. That's all part of what the study's gonna look at. And at the end of the day, when they're done with the study, they'll come and they'll present to us what, what the findings are and then we'll start to get an idea as to what the entities are thinking they may wanna do, including city of Justice. But we are in no way bound by participating in the feasibility study that we now have to also participate in whatever the final product is. So just know that we don't have to do that. I will tell you, this is one of those goals and objectives that you've given to me, to me and the staff from the first uh strategic plan that, that we put together when I first got here is you wanted me to look at ways that we can elevate code for, I'm sorry, uh, animal control services in the city. We can't afford to do this on our own. Get real long shelter, that's just not uh uh something that's plausible for us. And as I told you, both counties that provide service are not looking at elevating the service, so these are our times that we call, we, the city, call them at the, at uh West County Animal Control and they're full up, so they can't even, they won't even roll a truck out here for a, an animal, like we say, and come take a look at it cause they've, they've got nowhere to put it. So that's, to me, that's just not acceptable service. And the other thing is, when our residents call in, they force them to come call the city and then the city is the only one they'll accept the call from before they'll even consider rolling a truck. Well, that's great if we're open, but what happens if like right now, when we're closed? Right? So again, not acceptable service, I think, is being provided for our residents, so we need to do something. I think this is something that could end up benefiting us in the long run, where we are partnering with other entities like we've been doing with law enforcement, like we've been doing with municipal court, now we're doing that with code enforcement and Aurora. And this way, we are able to stretch our limited dollars and be able to provide services for our residents that we normally would not be able to because we just can't afford to do it on our own. So, what I'm asking the council is to consider approving this resolution so that we can enter into this interlocal agreement with the city of Justin and other participating cities so that we can move forward with this feasibility study that they're wanting to start here uh pretty soon. My saturated Russian. Man, I thought we were gonna do this. No, what you, so what you did is you passed a MOU, memorandum of understanding, saying, hey, we really would like to participate in this when you get ready to do a feasibility study count, I said. Well, this is the county that's in now, this is the official resolution. This is the official uh interlocal agreement. And then again, you can see the actual proposal uh that was submitted from the vulnerable as to what we're gonna be allowing.
And this is just the study, right?
Yes, ma'am, it's just the study.
So when it comes down to this founder, the meeting and all that, then we just start asking questions about no kill and policies.
Absolutely, yes, that's so. Right.
I will. Just like I was before, I'm a hundred percent on board with this. I do have a little bit of concern with the number of cities that are involved and kind of the far reaching areas that it goes to, that we're gonna run into some problems where they fill up like that in here and we're not getting service from them, but.
Which is again, part of what we're looking at with the study, because part of the study is gonna look at the volume of the entities that are participating. In other words, what does your activity look like? How many calls do you average a month or a year, ponder? And you fair to him, and Rome, and Justin. And just like we're doing right now with the water demand study that we turned over to Terry regional architect, we look at individuals, entities, and determine what are your needs and what are your needs with the growth is coming. So we'll probably be projecting today, we're not getting very many calls, particularly with the Dent County side of the city, right? But you fair to you, I mean, uh, uh, old ranks is continuing to grow. We got service blend, it's starting to build houses. Pretty soon we're gonna have fresh homes. We're just growing, so I mean, that people are gonna bring their cats and dogs and that means that we're gonna have more need for something like this, so we'll be looking at demand over probably the next ten, fifteen, twenty years for each of these entities to determine what facility do we need to build to address needs now or who's participating? And what do we need to look like for expansion at some point down the road to deal with the increased demands? Does that make sense?
Yeah, some of it I'm concerned with as of right now, because if you look at the amount of calls that are coming in, well, I can tell you nobody calls because there's nobody actually giving us any response, so a lot of people just don't call. Or maybe it's a thousand calls, you know, if they have.
Yeah, people are getting tired of being head against the wall. Right, so our numbers are not gonna be very active. Probably, well, a lot of that is just the apathy now. They're just tired and they know nothing's gonna happen. I get all that. And my hope will be that we, maybe we can do a, a study or put a city survey out there and say, hey, we know we have problems, we're looking at doing this. Can you tell us, how often have you seen a stray animal that, you know, you might have called if you knew that something was actually gonna be done? And that we might catch more.
Yeah, they may have to adjust the city contributions after that first year or something based on the volume or you pay per call. How, I mean, that's the point of the study, right? But I, I just wanna say that this has been, this has been years, you know, it's been asked for for years and it's been a problem for years and I'm really happy to see some traction unless we can finally figure out if this is something that we can do and make work.
Right. And that's again, the whole point of the feasibility study is, what's it gonna look like to make it work for the most entities? And then once we have something that looks like it's gonna work, it may not work for us. It may, we, we won't know that till after we're done. But then, when it's done, then we'll come and present it to the council and say, okay, here's all the things that were looked at. Here's the things that were pondered, we could have gone this way, they're gonna go this way. We're thinking, we're leaning towards this way, and what's the council saying?
And I just want to reiterate, I'm not advocating against this. I still, I still think that being a hundred percent on board with doing this because I think something else is bound to, enough from what we're getting now. I just wanted to make sure that voice those, some of those concerns with the.
Sure. Right, and, and uh again, this is a, as I get more information, trust me, I'll be sharing it with you all, so you can then let me know any questions or concerns you might have, so when I, we meet again, I can say, hey, here are things that, you know, has come up from you fair to you that we would like answers, or fair answers for stuff like this.
Yeah, I definitely don't wanna pay more than our fair share for what we're getting, but that's what we'll find out after this study comes back.
I will tell you this, though. All the people, cause you know, we've had a couple of meetings already of the city managers from these cities, and most of them are showing up. Some from, you turn from the West County, have not, but you know, we've worked with them before. I will tell you that everybody's of that mindset is we need to make sure that it's fair to everyone. You don't want somebody paying more than their fair share, so. This has been my experience, it's why I like working with cities, because we all know what we gotta go through, we all know our, our pain. We all know the criticism we come under with taxpayers, right? So we're always looking to make sure that you're getting a fair deal because as I told you, when we were trying to hammer out the details of the law enforcement is, at some point, if it becomes unfair to one of the partners, there's a good chance it's gonna be dissolving because then that's the council that's set up and saying, hey, we're not benefiting from this, or, or it's just not fair to us anymore. We're paying more than our fair share, or we're, we're subsidizing that city because they're not covering their costs. So, when you start to have those kinds of issues, it's when they start to fall apart. So if you keep it fair and always assessing it, just like we're doing with the law enforcement, ILA, and the uh municipal court outlet, we'll look at it every year through budget plan. We'll, I'm sure, we'll be setting this up and reviewing it and adjusting as some cities grow faster than others, or the need for cities increase, oh, about. Well, I'd like to make a motion if anybody has any questions. Uh, but I think we have, in the study, people, considering, I was just kinda, like I was discussing, I was just looking at different capacities around ground or shelters. West County's fifty, so we forget, uh, I mean, one while we have.
Well, that's, I mean, to, yes, if you watch the sound there, that's like. Yes. There you do this, I was.
So if you look at these builders, they're the smallest one, and any of that, that they had, and that probably was a hundred. Some of them like two hundred. So I, I think we'll be way north of a hundred. With the capacity, we're open.
Well, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty six oh one dash oh two dash one eighty four as presented.
I will motion you up second.
Awesome. Please, can we get a.
All those affairs say aye.
Aye.
Those votes. Pass it to the master.
Thank you, council.
You know, you say you leave the center an act on authorization, the purchase of a, you know, zero turn mower, about to exceed eighteen thousand, twenty eight dollars and one penny. There's source, source for all purchasing for all. Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this one as well. I've got Joshua Barnwell here, a public works director, that can answer any questions you might have. So if you recall, this summer, when we were to go talking about the proposed twenty twenty five, twenty six budget discussions, we discussed the five-year fleet plan, replacement plan that we have in place that keeps track of all of our vehicles, including zero turn mowers. And we talked specifically about the fact that we were needing a skid steer with attachments and we were needing a zero turn mower uh this fiscal year. That was actually put into the budget that was approved by the city council for the current fiscal year in the public works department for us to purchase a uh zero turn mower uh for less than nineteen thousand, I think it was. For less than nineteen thousand. Uh, we did find one that uh, if John here is selling, John here is selling. Uh, it is a uh, a, a, a zero turn mower uh diesel sixty inch mower. Um, and it's going to help us replace the six-year-old Cub Cadet fifty-four inch gasoline residential grade mower that uh is, we're really struggling with that because, one, it was not, first of all, not made for commercial use, it's more made for residential use. And we've had to replace so many forks in that thing. Uh, but, we do wanna keep it as a backup in case one of our mowers goes down and we need to, especially during the high growth season, we need to continue to mow. So, we, I wanna be clear, we're not gonna come to council to sell the Cub Cadet at this time. We're just gonna kind of put on mothballs for now, but we would like to have this one, I mean, John Deere zero turn mower before the mowing season starts. We did get this at the uh price point of about a little over eighteen thousand dollars. We are going to search Sourcewell, which we remember, it is a um purchasing uh cooperative, kind of like buy board. Uh, so we're able to do that without having to go out and get a bunch of different quotes. Um, this is going to improve our efficiency and productivity by having this commercial grade uh zero turn mower compared to the two that we have now. Um, it, it also has some additional features that, for safety, like it includes a roll bar and a safety belt uh and liquid cooling, which reduces the risk of overheating. Um, it has a adjustable suspension seat to reduce operator fatigue and it creates hopefully employee satisfaction while they're at the mowing. Uh, and in the transition to diesel eliminates a lot of the common gas-related mechanical issues. And so uh we're hoping then we will have less maintenance on this one than the, than the uh gasoline-powered engines. Did I leave anything out? Oh, no, all I have is this also allows, that's, that's a city to bow on orange and red or a base.
Correct. The law does stipulate, there must be diesel or propane, or red or orange, I just cannot use gasoline.
You're not, diesel propane only.
Which is about every day or.
Not climate, to put out.
Emissions.
Emissions.
Yeah, it's an emission.
The other thing is the new one, it's not featured on this picture, so the new one's gonna have what's called twheels, which we have on our other machine, which means that both the front and.
Where your tires are.
Yeah, there we go. So it will be no more replacing tires, not for the life of that machine. We have it on our Kubota, the best thing is in the world, comfortable, and they're bulletproof, literally. The specs, but.
I have a question, so I don't want to. Yeah, they're right. Uh, uh, so we're keeping the Cub Cadet, are we gonna add this in, over into the multi-person building again, for storage? So, where we store?
So, the Cub Cadet is moved out to the bar. We have space out there now, we got rid of the, you know, mailbox, so that we were installing. So the Cub Cadet moves out to the bar, the John Deere stays where the Cub Cadet's currently parked at, and the Kubota stays at the park in the uh storage shed that we have out there. So basically, we should not borrow in any emergencies, we should no longer, at current, be transporting the zero turns back and forth.
So, the, when, when we have to maintain code enforcement properties, um, this is a huge debt. Is the Kubota smaller to maintain?
No, they're both sixty inches, which is standard. Uh, most of the code enforcement properties that we're currently enforcing are one acre or half acre lots.
It look, it look big to me, I'm.
And the small shank, you know, commercials fifty four, fifty two, so.
And sixty seems big, but it's not that. I have one of them, it's fifty four and it's.
I don't know, so I don't know.
Yeah, so like the Cub Cadet currently is maybe.
It's fifty four, yeah.
Cub Cadet, the Cub Cadet, we have, let's say we're trying to borrow its fifty four. Uh, but the other one is sixty.
Yeah, the Cub Cadet's a two-blade, once you get to sixty inches, a three-blade.
Okay.
Is that the maintenance on these? Is that your department or?
Yeah. Yeah, ninety percent of it, the only time we don't touch it is when it gets into like engine work or a specialty item that we're not equipped to do, but all the blade swaps, oil changes, when they're not in warranty, which now, the current ones we have are no good, aren't warranting war. We do the servicing. When they're in warranty, then you go to dealer services to make sure that we're meeting the warranty requirements. But these right here, they're usually about one service a year. We're at, how long? Two hundred and fifty hours.
They're, we're, we're at to the point where we have to replace it. Well, no, no. I haven't done, just coming from a lot of work. It's a.
Just coming from a lot of work, it's a two thousand and four model, it has six thousand hours.
I mean, but you only know your area, right?
Six thousand hours, I mean, that's tough, we're averaging about three hundred hours a year right now. So six thousand.
I would think six thousand for you would be nothing, but.
No, we, so right now, we're three hundred hours placing the heat station.
You know, two thousand and four is still.
Yeah, the the diesels themselves, that motor, we can get rid of it, that motor still be running. I mean, we'll get rid of it just because the rest of it's worn out, but it's going to be an easy ten year item, more than likely. Seven, ten years, we'll keep it longer than we'll keep these heavy with it. So like a zero turn's good for about twenty five hundred hours max. We'll keep this one longer, because the cost, long term, is significantly less than trying to not keep a zero turn of two thousand hours.
Trying to figure out when next time we can put a pay in, twenty thousand.
If it will, if we do, it's because we inherited more land, not because one of these pieces of wood that. Went down on us.
This is already in the budget.
And they're targeting the group budget sitting there, if we put nineteen thousand in the budget, just came in under that.
It will be under.
Any other questions?
Do I have nothing?
Right, I'm sorry.
I would to approve the authorization first from John Dear, so your turn, lower not to exceed eighteen twenty eight oh one. There is source for purchasing.
I was just going to say my friend, he brought in today, he's on up some of the, all of the very stuff. Those girls.
Thank you, council.
Looks like a good one.
Well, so. The last, eventually we'll get a Florida tour, okay, for me, I'm not.
That's kind of the king. Kubota was harmed here, but we had two council members that insisted we not fly here.
Really? Wow, so we bumped the shame on them.
The Kubota, I can probably guess.
If I sit outside and it would be a little too sad. No executive session.
No executive session, all right, so we just have, Mary, councilman, no questions?
I have some questions, I'm really against, so I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that they've done to clean up the multi purpose building, it's a lot more organized. But I did have a question about that, which is why I asked about the, the mowers being stored, I know that there's. Some lack of storage issues, there's some things that are still in there, is there any possibility that we can discuss? Uh not today, but having a couple more storage containers, so we can add some more storage space, they get some more of those things.
Yeah, the conics swap.
Yes, okay.
So we can move stuff out of the the bay area?
Right, okay, because they, I mean, they've done a lot of work to kind of clear some of it up, and I I appreciate that, but there's a lot of stuff in there that I think can be put into a storage. Thing, and got out of there, because it been, I think it would help everyone to have that a little bit more clear.
Sure, and and just just know that we're in the, I guess, cleaning mode, we started that. Do we ever step on it last week, ten weeks ago, a week or two ago, we've started. We're going to start with cleaning out the conics boxes over there, because we need to move stuff out of the bay area over there. Including, we're moving bins that have been in there for, God, since I started here, that had paperwork. That we just need to go through and figure out, is this something we need to keep, or can we just get rid of it, or do we just, can we just scan it? And store electronically, not having to keep the paper copy, because some things we have to keep paper copies. You've used it, other stuff we can just do electronic, so just let you know, we're in the process of trying to take more stuff out. Better organize the bay area, but also take stuff out of there and move it elsewhere, but. At some point, I'm happy to have that conversation with the council about. If we were to buy another conics, where would we put it, what would it look like, what would the cost be, and relieve any more pressure from the bay area. But also know that this summer, when I start talking budget with you all. I'm also going to be talking about something that's in our strategic plan, and again, we haven't touched it, because we haven't gotten to that point yet, but. As if we get closer and closer to becoming also a utility operations for our city, for water and wastewater. We're going to need more space, and I think it would make sense for us to look at. A building, a building with a bay area and storage area and office area and all kinds of stuff. Across the creek here on the property that abuts um central. You're coming off of Martindale, and that will then relieve a lot of pressure that we have on a multi purpose building, because. One of the things that the council has given to us on the strategic plan is. You were allowed to see that multi purpose building to be a true public safety facility. So, but the only way that's going to happen is if we move public works out of there, but we got to put it somewhere. We can easily put public works, water, wastewater together all in one building, that's not a problem, they have the same. Equipment, they'll be sharing, you know, trucks, or you know, going out and going across and stuff, so it makes it easier on them. So we need to figure out, do we want to spend money on more conics boxes for storage now, or do we want to start looking at a plan? Working with an architect to figure out what is this other building going to look like? So then we can start figuring out how we're going to pay for it in a timeline to get ready for us to start up a water wastewater operation. And then again, hopefully turn this into a true public safety.
Uh right, I understand that, I just think, right now, and I know they've done a lot of needed work for some of that stuff, we're going through some of the boxes now, but we're going to go from being. Full, having stuff in there, to being full again, having stuff in there, so I don't really see, and they're not, and they're expensive, but they're not like. You're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? And I think adding a little more storage right now is probably a good idea, just because. There are times when I tell you, even just being over there so often, it gets difficult to walk through there to get to the truck, I mean. They're talking, we're like, almost feels like we're packed in, not side by side, and we're barely squeezing our truck out of there.
Okay, well, that that should never be the case, so I'll work with Joshua to make sure we.
You know, we've talked, him and I have talked about it somewhat, but if there's no place to put some of these things, because you know, now the trucks are parked outside, it's just. I mean, I think. I still think it would be beneficial to add something so you can, so we can get some of that.
Okay, well, not a problem, sir, we can, let me work with staff, and we'll come back and have a work session, discussion with the all here, okay with that? And then we can maybe do some numbers, have you a plan and see what you think, okay? Because you know, you certainly have funds in your reserve, your fund balance. Uh you know, last time, last budget, I believe you guys directed us to put up these cameras, said we did not have money for it, and I forgot how much that ran. Sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars, but we got it done, right? And you authorize us to draw down from the fund balance to be able to do that, so. That is not a problem, we'll come back and we can have a discussion, and you can let us know what you think, that work? Okay, great, thank you. What else?
Are you ready, next Wednesday?
Yes, sir, and I've got one, two, three, that have confirmed, you three. That you, I haven't heard from Stephen P. at least in a go.
He is, I don't think he's.
Yeah, well, I know, I've actually three down, uh it's coming, and I think you're bringing Jennifer, right?
I put it online, I put it online, I submitted before.
You did? You already repeated the website? Okay, well, I'm sorry, I missed it, so I'll put you on there, okay, so the good news is, uh Susan. Posted the notice of possible forum already, so that'll keep you guys out of trouble in case somebody. Falls a complaint with the ethics commission now in Austin, that you guys violated the open meetings, no you didn't, you posted possible forum, all I ask is. Uh, do not be talking about city business while you're there, it's okay to talk about what we're, this topic, we're going to be talking about with some water. Wastewater needs, there was more P U A creation, et cetera. But we don't want to talk specifically about city business, because we're not supposed to be doing that, and we're certainly not going to take any action, city action. As we feel, but again, we did put that notice of possible forum, so you're covered. It's at the Decatur uh Conference Center on the twenty eighth. I believe it starts at six o'clock, yeah, so uh, yeah, it starts at six o'clock. And then we're going to have the West County Mayor's Coalition meeting first, we'll have dinner. And then close out the West County Mayor's Coalition meeting, it should be pretty brief. We're going to bring in the newly appointed uh. Of Westwood P U A board members to get sworn in and actually conduct some business, so it's going to be a little true. Inaugural meeting, with this entity. I just don't remember, that's why, no, it's okay, I understand, don't worry about it, but okay, so are you going so, or are you bringing in plus one?
Uh, no, I mean, I think it'll just be me, I don't.
We're well, we're the eventing of babysitter. I will tell you, I expect we're going to have about two hundred people there, so it'll be kind of big, I'm already at one in the sixty six. Yeah, it's a big deal, this is a big deal, and I'll let you all know, for those who are attending. You're going to get a commemorative lapel pin that's about this big, that you're going to be able to keep, because. Five years from now, ten years from now, when they might have another banquet meeting, something like this. And they're reminiscing about when they first started, hopefully they're going to ask, who was there when we first met and show us. Right, the other thing is, we the city are going to get a nice little uh plaque, acrylic uh plaque. That um will be a little close here at city hall, because we are a founding member of the Westwood P U A. And our board members, all the other little members are going to get a nice little plaque as well. Because they, it shows it designates them as you are a member of the Westwood P U A board of directors. So we're, we're doing it right, letting people don't.
Do I get one of those for city council or?
Not far. Just a lonely city, where you're part of a big group like a public utility agency. Hundreds of millions of dollars. Get out the crabs and cargo.
People, we don't have a budget like just a local worker.
So are we on a motion to adjourn at this point, or are we on future business?
And I apologize for the Dent County residents, I do have no information for Dent County, but for the Rousdanny, uh please. Get informed, pay attention for J B one election.
Oh, I, I know two of them very well.
And two, and two seventy one district judge election, those are very important to our city, uh and we need to get involved in.
So now get out the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you, Robin, we appreciate it.
Bye.